Another minute, but we'll go ahead and begin. So call the meeting of the Oswego Public Library District Board of Trustees to order. We have a roll call, please, again. Conant, Pressett, Deal?
Here.
Friedman?
Here.
Martyr?
Here.
Ramirez?
Here.
Tamblin?
Here.
Wallers?
Here.
Thank you. Now the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the right of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any quick pulling of order on the agenda. Can we switch thirteen B and fourteen? Since thirteen B takes us out of the room.
Oh, sure. Before we begin, a little recognition that we have this evening, a big recognition. I'd first like to read our mission statement. The Oswego Public Library District exists to provide quality library service which will effectively meet the informational, educational, and recreational needs of district residents of all ages, with special emphasis on supplying popular materials, providing reference services, and assisting students of all ages in meeting their educational needs. With that, I'll turn it over to Sarah because we do have a big recognition.
Karen Leonard, forty years of service. Karen, when I came, you were updating our card catalog, and her colleagues have been added since then. You've never seen anything like her. She would come in the middle of winter in a full snowmobile outfit and walk home, so no cold. She's like the post office, but she's better. Love that. She also has a superpower with her making sure our new routines and adults with just one look. Love that. And I can say for sure she is the most well-known person on staff. So she's gone through all, people know her from all times, all decades, all are well remembered throughout. And it's been my privilege to work with her for thirty years, so it's been wonderful. And I appreciate you doing that.
So I'm Karen's supervisor and Carolyn White, like the head of adult services. And obviously Karen has a lot of library experience and thus a lot of library skills, but I want to tell you what I think is special about her. Number one, she builds relationships really well with all of the staff and with patrons. She makes the rounds in the morning before we open, greets everyone that's working at that time, brings treats. She's very special to me and patrons, as Sarah said. She knows a lot of people from a long time. She establishes friendships with them in the library and knows more about their personal lives than any of the rest of the several. And then second, she's really good with dealing with difficult conversations. She was a high school librarian. I also was that, and we agreed that that prepares you really well to deal with potentially contentious situations. And she had the situation of being videoed while she was dealing with a patron who strongly objected to a policy we had at that time. It made the Internet, and we found out later that other libraries were using it as training for their staff because she handled it so well. She's calm in those situations. She's very professional, doesn't raise her voice, doesn't get upset. She handles it well. And I have to look at my notes because I forgot what number three is. This isn't just a job to her. She's dedicated to this library. I think she loves this library, and she shows her dedication often. One time a while back, I think somebody called in sick at the last minute or something, and I called her to see if she could cover. We had less staff then, and she really seemed to be my only option unless I wanted to work a twelve-hour day. And she seemed hesitant, but a little reluctant, but I didn't know what else I could do, so I didn't let her off the hook very easily. And she finally gave in and came in. What I found out later was that she has a sister, well, knew that she had a sister that lives over a hundred miles away, and they had plans to get on the phone and watch the finals of Dancing with the Stars together. Because she came in, she missed that. At that time, that was a big deal. Dancing with the Stars was very popular, and she, it was one of her favorites. I described her as favorite. She didn't even tell me until she got there. And then another story that I probably shouldn't let Sarah know about, she is very helpful and supportive of me and of all of our staff. And one time, she and I and the IT manager at that time were here a little early on a Sunday, and I'd been cleaning house, and I had thrown a whole bunch of stuff in the dumpster. And then I realized, ah, I threw away something I didn't mean to throw away. Karen, I think you volunteered. We went outside. The IT manager lifted her up, as you can see, that isn't too hard to do. What are in the dumpster? She found and retrieved what I needed, and he lifted her back out of the dumpster.
This was the recycling one.
So she's been very helpful to me in a lot of ways, and even went to the extreme. So very special to all of us. We love her, and she's had a recent health issue, pretty serious one. And the first time I went to visit her in the hospital, she said, I want to come back to the library. Here she is, a librarian, so we're very happy to have her. She's a wonderful contributor in our department, and as I said, we all love her.
I just wanted to thank you on behalf of the board and all our patrons. If I do my math right, I think that's, we're talking about nineteen eighty-four. And we came to town in eighty-five. And for those that don't remember, we know when we moved to town, there was one traffic light in Oswego. And there were more kids from Boulder Hill than there were from Oswego in the school district. And when you went to the mall, there were two bridges that went over the railroad tracks that were wooden bridges on thirty-four. So the town has changed a lot. You've watched the library change a lot. And we just want to thank you for your service and for your caring and for being with us. Thank you.
I thought I should have said something.
No, you don't have to. Just have to.
Oh, I can't. I actually was a patron before I started working here, and at that time, the children's apartment was a basement. And so I have seen lots of different changes. Twenty-three of my forty years, I was also a high school librarian, and it was much more pleasant coming here to work than it was being in a high school setting. So I've enjoyed my time with everybody. Sarah was in adult services with me for a while, and I joked, all we had back in those days was the nameplate, and we should change it depending on who was working. And I joked I was going to put her name up there if I was at a, you know, band, if I was at the end of something, so maybe it was Sarah. But I have enjoyed all of it, and I hope to keep doing it a little bit longer. I have a defibrillator in my body so that nobody's going to have to shock me. Hopefully, that will never, ever happen.
But I didn't tell you, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Is that I teased her mercilessly?
Oh, yes.
And she still comes back. And I fired her at least a thousand times. And she still keeps coming back.
Well, I've seen, I know I've seen grandchildren. I don't know if I've ever seen great grandchildren, but I've seen a lot of different, and it's neat to, you know, see these kids grow up and they come back as adults. And I know a lot of students from my school library experience who are patrons here, and so they can stop in and see me too. So I've enjoyed all of that.
Thank you. No, you're not going to sneak around. Come back here. We also have a recognition this evening, not forty years, but she's trying. Thirty years. This month, Sarah's been with the Oswego Public Library District. And we thought we need to recognize that. And just for a little perspective, I talked about nineteen eighty-four. In nineteen ninety-four, when you came on board, we had seventy-nine thousand books. How many do we have now?
Over three hundred thousand.
We had nine hundred forty-seven videos. That might not count because we don't do videos.
Forty thousand.
Four thousand?
Forty thousand.
Forty thousand? Audio, thirty-two hundred, but twelve thousand people with library cards. How many now?
A lot.
We have a lot, she reports.
Something like fifty thousand, isn't it?
Yeah. This struck me, six computers in the building, but only one for the use of the public. That was nineteen ninety-four. So we thank you for your service in the library. You've seen a lot of changes. In fact, where we're standing, I think, was Foxy's.
Was Foxy's.
Foxy's. I tried to find my little blue piece of cement block from Louie's when we tore Louie's down, because I kept a blue, and my wife tells me I keep too many things, but a little blue piece of a block, cement block, that was knocked down, and we knocked that down. But we, and she always says, we didn't give you a plant because you said you'd kill it.
Kill everything, yeah.
These have been done in, but they'll last a while before they go brown. But you didn't do it.
I didn't do it.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, moving on to the minutes.
Second.
Motion in a second to approve minutes and questions or comments. If not, roll call, please, Jim. Wallers?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tamblin?
Yes.
Correspondents, Sarah.
We have three suggestions, one for the delivery of books to seniors and shut-ins, and we'll pass that to our outreach department. One about having more soap in the dispensers. And then one asking for better chairs. I want to remind everybody, our chairs are from nineteen eighty-one, and six teenagers can fit on them, and they've been recovered six times, made in Maryland. Made in Holland, Michigan, just wanted to say that. But they did say better chairs, but the person knows who they are, because they come asking me, because I don't know which chairs.
Where did you grow up?
I grew up outside. They're from Holland.
Okay.
Furniture capital. I'm very into Holland.
We also, board members, you see the note from Sarah. You didn't? I'll pass it. Okay. Moving on, financials. Sarah, anything about the fund balance report?
Everything is on schedule. We are, March thirty, so it quarters the way through the year. Everything is on budget. We have a couple of extra things with miscellaneous expense, but everything is going to even up in the year. Are there any questions on the money with the finance? We did get our tax extensions, and those we put into the fiscal year in twenty-five budget, which we'll have at the finance committee office.
Okay, could I have a motion to approve the financials, please?
I make a motion to approval of fund balance and revenue expense reports.
Okay. One second.
Second.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Hearing on, Jim? Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes, sorry.
Tamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant abstain. Okay. Accounts payable. Sarah, any?
I just wanted to mention on page seventeen, book page, which is a handout that the library gives concerning books and recommendations that is a donation from the front of the library. They pay for that with their in-house and one-year book sale, which will be first weekend of August. We also had our big annual bingo train, which is with the HVAC for both Oswego and Montgomery on page twenty-two. And I hope everybody knows how much brighter it's in here. They did all the windows.
Thank you.
Mr. Squeegee, I think it's from Bill's as well. Sherlock Squeegee. Thank you. Oh, yeah, I should say, they did a great job.
Could I have a motion on the bills, please?
Motion for the approval of April twenty-twenty-four bills in the amount of three hundred and seventy-four thousand one hundred and twenty-three.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments? Okay. Roll call, Jim? Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant abstain. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Directors' report. Sarah.
We continue to increase the number of new patrons. We did do our, every three years, we go through and heard our system of people who did not. That's required by standards, so we've just done that for our patrons, so it's why the numbers are a little not quite sure at this point. We continue to have an increase in usage at the door, items circulated, and reciprocal borrowing. I also attended the PLA conference in Columbus, Ohio, and I've added a two-page summary of some of the highlights. Any questions? Also took a tour of a bookmobile. Three months, they had one on the lot, but I did not buy it. And we're trying to, I know, I charged it on the card. But they did talk about some of the new things happening in libraries, such as new privacy issues coming in, federal things, having to do ADA, things having to do with seniors, dementia, and all kinds of things having to do with libraries with pays and fees, some of the things we've done in the past, such as no longer requiring fees. People are getting rid of the cost of making copies and other things as well. So that kind of puts us on the edge of what's coming down the pipe in libraries and what's popular in libraries. That's what a lot of the conference, the things that I did too as well.
Just one question that I could ask. I saw that March twenty-three and March twenty-four of Montgomery and Oswego were significantly less, moving on wide, is that a trend? On the total circulation numbers on page twenty-four. Is that correct?
You mean for items circulating, so you're saying?
Yeah, towards this total circulation.
That's for March, that's pretty typical. I mean, not by far. Our largest numbers are going to be in the summer, which can get fifty to sixty thousand per building. Plus with spring break and everything.
I want to comment during the director's report.
Oh.
If that's okay.
Really? Oh.
As you can see, the green bag she has sitting there, my wife and I have been on the road trip that being sponsored, one of the libraries sponsoring it is our Oswego Library. There are a number of libraries, and you can, you've seen, you know, passport, and you visit the libraries, and you get a stamp when you visit the libraries. Of course, some of the libraries, that's a special place to end up. While we were at the library, of course, I couldn't pass up the chance to say, well, I'm a library trustee in Oswego. And at some of the libraries, that brought out the director as soon as they heard that. And when they came out, every single director that came out from the libraries that we visited were very, very complimentary of Sarah. What a wonderful colleague she is, how wonderful it is to work with her, and how fortunate we have to have her as our representative in Oswego. So I wanted to pass that along so that everybody could hear that. And I don't know, the road trip is still going on. It's fascinating to go visit other libraries, and of course, my wife and I, we always, as I said before the meeting started, because of my own personal experience, we always gravitate to the children's section because we like to talk to the children's librarians and spend time having a discussion there. So anyway, I wanted to share that with everybody, and thank you for listening.
I also wanted to mention we're very into cicadas here. So we have a cicada checkout bag that has the models of the cicada. We have books about cicadas. We have activities and coloring books on cicadas. So we're excited about the cicadas, these can be checked out, and then the staff also are wearing some other shirts for cicadas.
Recipes?
Recipes? Don't ask me that. No recipes. I didn't want anybody thinking I go do three animals correctly.
Are they really that big, like that thing?
Yeah, so this would be the one with the red eyes and that signature. I'll pass that around.
Could I have a motion to approve the director's report, please?
I move to approve the director's report.
Second.
Roll call, Jim? Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tamblin?
Yes.
Wallers?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to committee reports. Finance is the only committee active, and there would be a meeting of the finance committee directly after this meeting, so we'll hear more from them at our next meeting in May. With that, we'll move down to unfinished business. Twelve A, pedestrian bridge or trail, creek walk, Sarah.
We've been working with several engineers, and I live from our history all the way back to the nineteen eighties, working with a way to use the creek or get across the creek. Right now, we are in a, working with the village of Oswego, as well as the Oswego Park District. We looked at some different engineers. This was the engineer the park district uses, and it would be a pedestrian bridge, a granite layout. They would go from the behind the dumpster there, go across the way on the high side, and then would connect to our three acres across the way there. And then it could have things such as a theater over there, a storytelling area, and then a path that goes down to the creek that would connect all the different walkways from the Veterans Memorial down to there to the park that's on the other side of the bridge. So this is a very large undertaking that we're involved, partnership with several different other government entities, but for the welfare of everybody. I think it'll be a real wonderful thing for the downtown. It would add some nature and then gives us some opportunity to use some outside storytelling and make a theater, and we could use the barn. It's going to be wonderful. We're super excited. But this portion would be the pedestrian bridge, which goes from library property to library property. So this would be something that we would want to maybe take a little ownership of. This would be to get some designs. They come up with several of them. They meet with the library board, the park district board, the board, and we would all take a look and see what would work. This would work also toward how much it would cost, what kind of grants, and other things that we can write with the partnership of other entities.
Sounds amazing.
It's awesome. It's really amazing, yes.
Now, the discussion, the dream of going from Hudson Park all the way up through our land and onto Stone Gate into that park and be able to go back and forth on all of that, in all seasons. Okay. We do have a motion on the agenda. The call for that motion, please, Jim?
I make a motion to contract with Strand Associates in the amount of eight thousand three hundred to create options for the library district board, park district board, and village to review designs for pedestrian bridge and trail on the library district property.
Second.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
Yeah, so when we do a bid, so we have specifically already enlisted who we're doing it with, do we have to put these out to the public? Are there certain amounts?
They would actually help us do the bid contracts. They would do the construction on that. Because they're engineers, one of the ones we've worked with, they're considered, they would have to, they would help and assist with that, or beyond, as we do with our construction projects.
They're basically our agent that helps us do the bidding.
Do we have any idea what kind of budget is needed for the actual development? I mean, do we have even a ballpark? Do we know what we're looking at?
Some very large numbers have been thrown around, and I wouldn't want to say without having them give me the actual engineering, because I would not want to undervalue what it could be. It's a very large project.
The structure market is pretty volatile lately, and I think it's just, it's good practice to give somebody like Strand to do the analysis, determine the type of bridge and span. Those things all enter into the cost. When you try to do a cost estimate before you know some of those parameters, it's difficult to get a decent number. So I think it's prudent to have them do the work, give us a number, and then it all allows us to be more confident when we go after grants, that we've got a decent number. So I think it's the appropriate sequence of steps, and yeah, so I would support.
Now, is the, is the park district or the village contributing to this fifty-eight thousand?
They are not. This is just our mouth, mainly because it is from our property to our property, and we own it.
And I guess just to go on to that, I think once we have the amount established, maybe then we can seek out partners to participate in the cost, but I think practically, we're going to need some sort of a, you know, ITEP grant or someone to grant to build the bridge, because it's going to be, it's not going to be inexpensive for sure. So, and the other, you know, item here is, you know, continuous maintenance of the bridge, and if we could get a partnership with, you know, the village or maybe the park district, that would be a huge benefit for us too. So I think that, you know, should be explored once we have an idea what the cost is and, you know, some semblance of a plan.
Yeah, we discussed the worst-case scenario, the piece of real migration, the first flood that's per spring and then all into the river. So we need some engineering to make sure that it's going to last. Any other questions? Hearing on, roll call, please, Jim? Wallers?
Yes.
Conant? Yes. Deal?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tamblin?
Yes.
We've got a new business, a fee proposal to review distribution of impact fees for the village of Oswego. Sarah.
We have done this before with the other government entities. They go through and see what our capital needs are. They use that as the way to proportion which of the different taxing districts gets what percentage of the impact fees from the developers. So this would be to update that. In the past, we've done this, and then we also get impact fees from Plainfield and Montgomery, and then we share that, pardon me, as well as unincorporated Will County. And then those funds go directly into, except for Will County, which goes to our operating fund, which we agreed to in nineteen eighties, all the other funds go directly into our capital to build and construct and maintain our buildings. And this is our percentage of the, of the lead.
What's the change from where we are now?
The lead, that they, that it was requested by one of the other entities that they had other needs, and they wanted to review it as to, and they changed in the sense, but I think it was like eight to ten years ago, or less.
Okay. Could we have a motion, please, on thirteen A and B?
I'll make a motion for the approval of intergovernmental agreement to analyze the appropriate.
And they use that to determine what the impact fee would be for the developer per home.
So does this affect our, I don't understand, does this affect our tax?
No. It's a tax for developer. So all these developers come in.
They're paying impact fees, right?
And so they're making all this money off all the subdivisions and that's impacting us because we're getting more people. And so they need to pay a fee in order for us to expand.
But the study is to change the current rate that we would get?
The study is to determine, based on our capital needs, if the percentages are correct for what we're getting. Does that make sense?
I think we turned in costs for two new campuses.
Two new campuses. So for, because it would be, when we listed this, we put in the Montgomery and purchase and prop, you know, and then that would be, and it goes directly into our special reserve fund. We don't touch it as our, our tax money goes to I M R F, social security, our operating fund, but we don't get tax money for our special reserve. And this, these funds go to our special reserve and they're actually put on a separate line item in your financials so you can see what money is coming in. And then we use that money for like repairing the roof or we've been using it in the past for construction, such as the additional study rooms and such.
So who has the final say on the impact fee distributions? Is that us? Is it all the units together? Is it the village of Oswego?
The study, the study will create a report and then we would review the report.
Right.
And then we could determine.
But ultimately, we know who actually decides, because this is just a study to advise.
Each entity decides because we get impact fees from Oswego, Sarah said. We get them from the county, we get them from Montgomery.
Montgomery and Plainfield.
So we deal with each of those entities and they each have their own rules and assessments for impact fees. You know, correct me if I'm wrong, from the school's point of view, we, we used to say when a new home is built, it took about eighteen months before the schools started to receive any money whatsoever, but the kids come day one. And the same way, library services come day one. And impact fees were originally created to fill that gap of that eighteen months where the entity receives nothing, but the services are still available to the person moving in.
So Sarah, the percentage that's, that we're responsible for is our portion of the study?
That's correct.
Right. And then once the study is completely able to tell us what our impact fee should be to compensate the village, the library for the impact of the new home. And typically, there's been agreements with the municipalities, who does the collection, to update that and make sure that we're getting that amount and they pay it out from time to time. Is that correct?
That's correct. I believe it's written in the language of the study itself to say that it would be updated.
So I would suggest that once we get done with this study, we go back to look at our impact fee in Montgomery and in Plainfield because it's likely going to be similar to what's determined from this study. And, you know, I ask that the village, the two villages, to update it to be consistent.
More questions? Roll call, Jeff? Deo?
Yes.
Friedman?
Yes.
Martyr?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Hamblin?
Yes.
Walters?
Yes.
Conant?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving thirteen B boardwalk through of the Oswego campus to after fourteen. The group to fourteen will concession, public comment. The board will now receive public comment concerning items on this agenda, as well as communication and enforcement, citizens or representatives from other agencies. Such comments do not include discussion of personnel matters, which should be brought directly to the attention of the director. Board's meeting is a meeting held in public. It's not a meeting of the public. It is prerogative of the president of the board to recognize members of the audience. If you are recognized to address the board, you are asked to stand, identify yourself, and address the whole floor. Now, meetings are limited to three minutes and a total of thirty minutes in total. With that, Barb, put your hand.
Okay. I'd like to read you excerpts from a poem in the Book of Books entitled Wisdom is Calling. Wisdom is calling. Understanding is raising her voice. She cries aloud, "People, listen, I say worthwhile things. When I speak, my words are right. My mouth says what is true because my lips detest evil. All the words from my mouth are righteous. Nothing false or per good is in them. They are clear to those who understand and straightforward to those who gain knowledge. Receive my instruction rather than silver. Receive my knowledge rather than finest gold. The fear of the Lord is hatred of evil. I, wisdom, hate pride and arrogance. I, wisdom, hate evil ways and duplicitous speech. By me, kings, reigned, and princes make just laws. By me, princes govern, nobles too, and all the earth rulers. I love those who love me, and those who seek me will find me. I follow the course of righteousness, along the paths of justice. Therefore, children, listen to me. Happy are those who keep my ways. Hear instruction and grow wise. Do not refuse it. For he who finds me finds life and obtains the favor of the Lord. But he who misses me harms himself. All who hate me love death." I would like to highlight this line from that poem. "I, wisdom, hate pride and arrogance, evil ways, and duplicitous speech." Over the months, it has become clear that many of you have duplicitous speech. You say you want to enrich the children, yet you also say pornographic material must remain present in their section of the library. You say your concern is for the full well-being of children, yet your policies prove greater loyalty to the pride movement, which demands that children be exposed to perversion here, there, and everywhere. As the poem from the Book of Books declares, wisdom hates pride and duplicitous speech. In addition to sharing that poem, I would like to point out that this is Passover reading. Many are remembering a great deliverance from enslavement. Some of our founding fathers felt so strongly that America had experienced a similar exodus in her break from England, that Benjamin Franklin and Thomas Jefferson suggested our national seal depict Moses crossing the divinely parted sea. Still today, Moses is famous for confronting Pharaoh as God's representative and demanding that he let God's people go. I, and like-minded citizens, are likewise here, demanding that you let our children go. Let them go from the agenda to enslave them in a lifestyle of sexual perversion or potential addiction to porn, both of which you are either inadvertently or deliberately promoting by your stubborn refusal to remove porn from the children's section. The author of the wisdom poem which I read earlier also wrote this. First comes pride, then disgrace. But with the humble is wisdom. Wisdom is calling. I hope you respond. It would be good to respond.
Okay, Molly?
Honoring Karen and Sarah tonight and reminiscing about the last thirty and forty years reminded me of a time when we honored God in America, when we remembered, when we knew that our government was built upon the shoulders of Jesus Christ per our founding covenant and per our founding documents. Even more specifically, as I reminded you months ago, Illinois was founded in gratitude to God and established a constitution to secure the continuance of His blessings. And you, most of you, have used the power given to you by the people to instead attempt to establish a seat of authority for Satan within this Oswego library system. You have received warning after warning after warning from the people and from God through prophecy, yet you refuse to relent. You're storing up judgment for yourselves in the day that the Lord moves His hand, and I suspect that day is going to come sooner than you anticipate. You have no legal grounds in the material or the spiritual realm for this attempted usurpation. Pornographic material will not remain in this library. Gender-bending propaganda will suddenly become a thing of the past. And thoughts of deviant sexual pairings will cease to be forced upon our children. And when it's gone, I want you to remember that it was the Lord who removed it. And you, who have perpetrated these crimes against children, and you who have sat idly by, will be removed from your seats of power. Regardless of how the power structure of the world looks to you today, and regardless of what you think you have gotten away with, this fact remains, that Jesus Christ reigns over this board, whether you believe in Him or not, whether you understand the extent of His power or His authority or not. Jesus Christ reigns over Illinois. Jesus Christ reigns over America. And Jesus Christ reigns over the world. There is no authority on earth that Jesus is not senior to. Your sexually perverted schemes were defeated at the cross two thousand years ago. Your attempts to usurp His authority were declared futile in the day He resurrected and ascended to His throne. You have no authority to influence the gender of His children, and your opinions about human sexuality will be proven irrelevant. May God have mercy on those of you who have been deceived by the deceiver, and may He cut off those of you who have full knowledge of the one with whom you are partnering. We're all about to witness with our very own eyes that Jesus is, in fact, King.
Yes. Hi. My name's Eric. I live in Montgomery and I was kinda just asking myself, why am I here tonight? Because I'm not sure it serves a purpose. And part of my being here is I feel like I'm supposed to be building a bridge. Because I've seen people here that have, you know, one opinion on one side, one opinion on the other side. I'm also here to support Jim. I like Jim. He just kinda says it as it is. Martyr, Jim Martyr. He just kinda says it as it is and sometimes that rock has some feathers, which is kind of entertaining to some reason. But anyway, I think what I'm really supposed to do tonight is just kinda highlight the beauty of our differences. Because though I do agree with a lot of what this side is saying, I was also raised in a very, actually tolerant family. I grew up with all the answers and had a lot of interesting experiences and everything like that. So I wanted to highlight not only the beauty of our difference, but also like real tolerance. Because I wanna see people not just be tolerant of the, what I would consider very far-fetched ideas, I'd like to see people be tolerant of these Christian ideas as well. And I think as people who, you know, claim to be very intellectual, I think we can actually take a look at the historicity of the Bible and other things like that. We can look at the evidence for a creator and all that. And I can talk to anyone who about all that, I'm plenty of studying and all of that. But just to look at both sides, you know, just to really honestly take a look at both sides. And then a note that I wrote here, it's better as a harsh word from a friend than a kind word from an enemy. So sometimes when we hear things that are difficult to swallow, I think it's really important to take a listen to what people are actually saying and really consider what it is. I mean, especially those of us that are claiming to be intellects, I would highly encourage you to really take a look at both sides and not just to dig our feet in and say, this is my position, this is how I stand no matter what. I mean, there's plenty of evidence for real truth. And if you dig into the truth, you may find that some of our opinions are wrong, myself included. So I just wanna encourage everybody to do that. Thank you.
Catherine?
I'm Catherine. I'm speaking on behalf of Julie Stinson. Most of you probably know her by name. I'm sorry I didn't be here tonight to deliver this in person, but my daughter is sick, so I had to stay home. This marks the one year anniversary in me attending the library board meetings. As you know by now, I'm a lifelong resident of the Oswego Library District and have appreciated all the wonderful experiences it has offered over the years. I have been speaking up over the past year because of one issue, and my comments are not targeted against a specific people group, nor am I suggesting book bans. But I am concerned about the explicit sexual content available to minors in our library. I have been coming for a year now, speaking to you and asking to have a conversation regarding lewd and inappropriate content found in books like All Boys Aren't Blue and Gender Queer, which are housed in the young adult section of this library. Minors can access them without parents ever knowing. The extremely profane and disturbing content should absolutely not be found in the youth's section. I was told to express my concerns by filling out every consideration slip, which I completed over six months ago in November twenty twenty-three, but nothing has moved forward. It seems my concerns fell on deaf ears. Again, that was half a year ago and I'm struggling to understand the lack of response. I came one year ago as a concerned parent who wanted to review the library policy about sexually explicit content being available to minors. The concerns I voiced a year ago still lie unaddressed. This board has not ever called a meeting to discuss my concerns or ever been willing to have a conversation about them. And when Jim Martyr even suggests that he has talked over and the meetings get adjourned as fast as possible. Why won't we talk about these concerns? Why can't we talk about these books? I am still coming to these meetings because I am still concerned. Why haven't my concerns been discussed? They are met with only silence and inaction. I am asking for a board meeting to address these topics as soon as possible. In closing, I wanted to share the difference between facts and truth. According to Merriam-Webster, a fact is a piece of information presented as having objective reality, something that has actually, actual existence as a piece of information. Truth is different. Webster defines it as the body of real things, events, and facts. It is reality. So you see, truth is greater than fact. It can include facts, but it is not limited to them. It is something more. The fact is, J.D. Pritzker wrote a legal provision that protects libraries and schools from being sued for providing sexually explicit material to minors, even though this is illegal in all other spheres of society. This provision actually exists. It is a fact. But the truth is, we have a moral obligation to protect our children from destructive, lewd, and perverse material, especially when their parent has not consented to it. This truth supersedes the law. When fact and truth conflict, truth must always win. The truth is, you, library board... The concerns I voiced a year ago still lie unaddressed. This board has not ever called a meeting to discuss my concerns or ever been willing to have a conversation about them. And when Jim Martyr even suggests that he has talked over and the meetings get adjourned as fast as possible. Why won't we talk about these concerns? Why can't we talk about these books? I am still coming to these meetings because I am still concerned. Why haven't my concerns been discussed? They are met with only silence and inaction. I am asking for a board meeting to address these topics as soon as possible. In closing, I wanted to share the difference between facts and truth. According to Merriam-Webster, a fact is a piece of information presented as having objective reality. Something that has actually actual existence as a piece of information. Truth is different. Webster defines it as the body of real things, events, and facts. It is reality. So you see, truth is greater than fact. It can include facts, but it is not limited to them. It is something more. The fact is, J.D. Pritzker wrote a legal provision that protects libraries and schools from being sued for providing sexually explicit material to minors, even though this is illegal in all other spheres of society. This provision actually exists. It is a fact. But the truth is, we have a moral obligation to protect our children from destructive, lewd, and perverse material, especially when their parent has not consented to it. This truth supersedes the law. When fact and truth conflict, truth must always win. The truth is, you, library board, have the authority to dig deeper into this subject and make good policies that will help keep these kids safe. Please call a meeting to discuss these concerns as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I think we will also move the board walk-through. Let's do that after our...
Is that the last speaker?
That's the last speaker.
Or anyone else? Can I just make one quick comment? I would like to have addressed people's requests to have a meeting or a committee. Maybe staff could have their own committee, look into the issue, come up with a proposal, present it to us. Come back. Let's have a, let's just have an open board meeting, a special meeting to have a discussion. Or an oblique coming next week.
Thank you, Jim.
One minute, I have to shut him down.
I'll have a motion to go into closed session now.
Keep joking. I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Okay.
All the papers are on?
Aye.
Thank you.
They're all first hour, first serve, and then they're an hour. And then afterward, a lot of the tutoring will be done downstairs, and they kept there. I mean, because there's a lot of kids.
So if you come in and want one of their all, do you just pass it?
It's locked. I don't know about that.
Because if nobody's waiting, they could stand there. So she could have been in there for five hours. And then if you ask the desk, they'll say, oh, let me go, let them know someone's waiting. Yep.
That's how we do the other building. Our rooftop garden is maintained by the Oswego Environmental Group, the high school teenagers.
Really?
Yes.
Cool.
Uh-huh.
I know they're later.
You know they're later? And it's a little like place for pollinators.
I didn't know this existed.
Me neither.
You didn't?
No, I didn't. This was a big thing.
And you know what this should have, what should have happened is this should have been a Florida ceiling window because you don't really see it.
Next project.
Do people go out there at all?
I mean, there should be glass down here.
We can't in this because there's no rail.
Well, when you do that, it puts an outside access to it too.
You can get it up from the door over there.
Oh, you can? Is it like, is it, can people actually go out there?
Not for sure.
Like, there's no rail.
We wanted one on this side, but it's, the building is not built to handle it. Because this, this was built to handle it, and it was constructed and designed for the purpose of...
If you push the thing at the front.
And then the Queen Foundation of the Oxford Valley is meeting here tomorrow morning.
That's cool.
They're coming to meet Karen as well. And then Krista, you got these pieces?
Yep.
Yep. And then also added two to the other building. Yes.
Yeah, we tried to clean it up as best as possible, but it is what it is.
Don't we get to see the soundproof though?
No, it's very noisy, but... Soundproof, because I guess I'm really loud. So I'd have to go home when I had private conversations on the phone. So I guess I'm very loud.
Did you clear the elevator from your office?
I don't. No, they have it very secret.
Pretty soundproof.
What's your favorite, what's your favorite music, Sarah?
Oh, um, I was in audiobooks, but not here because I get distracted by the audiobook and work. I am unable to do that.
I hear you. Take a header on these steps.
Get the elevens?
Take care of that.
Yeah. Yeah. Yeah, very cool. But when, yeah.
So we're looking at the slat wall, the mural. They have a slat wall now over at Montgomery. Um, this one's been here fifteen years, and they'll just put it over there, and then they can put programs. They can put things about what's happening in the libraries. This would be like a great space and show communication.
Can I see the central mine tee of the atrium at Tilden Tower? Where, um, where I can see there's great quotes about the importance of it. Of course, now Tilden Tower has that atrium and its condos.
And it's nice. And when we used it about fourteen, this is wallpaper. But I think it's just such a prime spot when you walk in. Everybody's on probation. Um, this is a very nice display here, the scene on the sit-ups. I did want to mention that that was gonna be thrown away before a public library, and we went and fixed it up, and A.J. put wheels on it. And he kinda fixed it up, so it's free. It's my favorite cost.
That seems like...
Nice.
That's great.
The mural is gonna say, just we're gonna put the, at the last board meeting we did, they had those slat walls that had all the programs and such, and so that's gonna go on top of it. So we'll have like, yeah, a little thing. So we'll have all the programs going on.
The mural's not as big as it is.
Yeah. I know, isn't that nice? Solid.
It is solid.
Some wheels, you say?
Some wheels. Well, yeah, it just gives a little push.
Put a motor on it, it'd be a boom, boom, boom.
You happen to be down in the back of Montgomery one, you're trying to see. Have our sixty-five dollars, please. There's a flying color that's one of our original ones from the forties on what they charged people. And there's an Apple II computer. I think in the game where you go on the wagon.
Oregon Trail?
Thank you.
You, I was just gonna say that.
Sarah, the question about the anniversary. What if you were to speak to the people who are interested in the council and the...
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely. I think it's medication actually in October, so we're gonna kinda push it. This was just during... Oh, no, we've been very excited about this. Fifty percent, right. Agreed. How we kind of work from what everybody else gave us. Yeah. Here, and you'll see Mary's mural was up.
Wow. Amazing.
It is.
It's changed so much. They're also working on...
Oh, perfect. Okay.
Well, yeah, I think... Oh, no. Need a way to find that. Great level or? Yeah. It keeps the temperature. Cool. All right. Thank you for my information. Good to thank you. My shelf over here. And then now the new adult space out.
Sarah, that's a great use of space to make that smaller.
I agree. And then that gives it a lot more, people are able to see covers, which are part of the beauty of it.
That's the goal.
Like when you get a menu at the diner that has the pictures.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Uh, we have the puzzle exchange at the other building, but this is, this is where it will be. Somebody requested that to come back, so puzzle exchange back.
Are there checked in and checked out, or are these just...
On your honor.
No, on your honor, so you take one and bring whatever you don't want. Oh, tell both buildings, have the puzzles, both buildings, and it's gonna be a feature now.
I was gonna tell everybody, okay, I went to Puerto Rico eight weekends ago. And in San Juan, there was a giant take-one-leave-one community library with like milk crates up against a wall. It was huge. I took a picture. Not a good picture, I was in a van.
A new adult just started last week, so we're happy to have her onboard. Thank you.
Hi. Happy to have you.
Thank you. You're doing a fantastic job. Happy that you're here.
Favorite spot?
Oh.
Can't, can't leave this alone?
No, I'm for it.
Yeah.
Is everything done that we had on our...
Yes, except for outside book drop. We've been requested an outside book drop, so most good. Whatever Krista finds. Top one is just building.
This is pretty, it's really nice in there.
It's like a treehouse.
It is.
There are some trees over here. Are they holding us?
I was gonna say, which is a look at a picture, but like, look at this.
Oh, my gosh.
Isn't that insane? It was a take-on leave-on, like a little...
Great library.
This was in San Juan, and it was just like milk crates. And there's like barely a overhang.
I know, right? Because it rains there all the time. Look at it, it's like...
I was gonna say, back to the car, so it was a really bad picture, but there's this little overhang over the top, and it's literally just this giant little free library.
Concept where...
Right?
I know. I'll show you when we get upstairs. You can see it right from the back of the parking lot, and then goes right across, same level, right here the barn is, about three acres across the way. I really appreciate that. I'm gonna get... No. No, where we want to. Full-stuck animal taxis are in it.
So what have the, what have the...
Oh, it's upstairs. It's up with the genealogy, and we're working on digitizing newspapers. The newspapers are...
Oh, what a difference. That would pay you all money. Obviously, I spent all three years.
And Pete, here's, here's the money shop. When we get to Montgomery, we need a money shop. We'll have a couple there, because we'll have the river and we can have a shot down.
Like if you just put it out there.
Perhaps. Uh, I think the roof garden there.
See that door right there? I have a feeling it will be stop, 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 and then all of a sudden, go.
I hope. It's serious. Open ceiling.
Oh, we could hear every word.
Used to put adult computers there.
They were right here.
Everybody chit-chatting and she could hear about.
Oh, wow. Well, prime spot for gossip.
I was gonna get in a bad time with the soundproof office upstairs.
Everything works. Oh, do you want to make it later? Um, whatever works. You look at, um...
These are...
I can do the seventeenth. That's okay?
Yeah.
Yeah. That was like the biggest hole where we all were shopping, was to make all these nice views usable guns. Isn't that beautiful? It's really nice.
Yeah.
Worth having a trip in.
Yeah. Especially right now at this time of year with all the green bursting out.
Yes, while we're having a meeting, I saw some kid out waiting in the creek with a net, and he was net fishing.
I love that.
I haven't seen anyone doing that. There's some fishing poles, but yeah.
My nephew will like really try, watch very clearly. My nephew just likes to go like literally like baiting to the creek. You know, like catch stuff in there. He caught a snake one time and like, um, crepes and all these things.
Do you think that's the tree Sarah was talking about that they suggested we might need a tree?
Yeah.
Still think D and D?
But like combined with Risk, the game of Risk and D and D combined or something.
You get to like, you can like paint your, you know, your pieces.
It's like a big deal right now. I'm sort of excited to see all the different age groups.
Tried my hand at a little D and D here today, but haven't ever done more hammer.
Is there any questions? Well, Krista did a great job moving collections around, making them all flow. Sensible, I guess.
Yeah. We have the grandkids. My daughter's been here for two weeks. She came back and played a little star on San Diego. So immediately took a plane, stayed with us for three days to see if there was anything to do. As described.
No, that's not good.
Well, Casper, I would say she's, when she found out that she had a needle, now she's probably wondering if she'll be able to pack. She's having immune conditions, so now she's getting busy. And then she's putting the list in the laundry.
I put in my uncle, who had hip surgery, but it was like a dream.
Really? Really?
Yeah.
So she's in America through that, and I think probably... She should be very careful. She'll close up.
Yeah.
Well, you earn my money because I still can't...
People who are younger, they say, oh, my life just sounds...
I'm glad you didn't come driving home in it.
I know. I could be coming on.
From Ohio.
I told Jan.
Sarah, can I check out the caterer bag? Absolutely.
Right now. I actually...
Just have him check it in and then check it out to you?
What's the password?
That makes me feel so happy. Wait, did you check it out? It's just checked out to me, and then check it in, and then check it out to you. Oh, yeah. Isn't that cool?
The girls are going to be stupid. I told her, I said, I'm using one of the books with my girl section. Yeah. Oh, my gosh. With the peek-through one.
Yes. Do I have all your books? Yeah, I think it's got all the books, all the parts. If something didn't make it back to the bag, tell them it's my fault.
I'm going to take one.
And then I... They probably have another one that's fresh.
I know. They're just going to steal it up to wear it.
Oh. Those models are really cool.
I don't know. Sarah never even to me.
I'll be like, thanks, Tom.
Do I have a motion to adjourn, please?
I will adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Next regular meeting, May 22nd, the fourth, Wednesday. Okay, 5:30 at Montgomery Campus. With that, finance?
It is now 6:55. We will call the finance committee meeting to order, and we'll have a gap.